So that if you have a guest, we can get him done, get him out of here so he doesn't sit around for the whole court. All right, since his comments, First Order Administration 141, Larry Baron, Winnie Stoll EMS. Larry, would you make sure that's on, please? And you have three minutes to make some comments, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'd like to speak on behalf of some changes that are going on with Winnie Stoll's board. There's been some discussions about transferring the building back to the county. We've had discussions with the new board that's been formed. We think at this time it would be a good thing to do. We'd like to see if due diligence can be done by the county attorney and whatever is necessary to make that transfer happen. And we appreciate your diligence on this and we hope it'll work out for all of us. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. That's the shortest that's been in this bar.
It's true.
Hi, Bobby Joe Chapman. Bobby Joe, where's my buddy Ellis?
He's coloring. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to come back and follow up and keep up with what's going on in regards to cleaning out the dishes and creeps and things in the area around Wendy's Bay. I plan on continuing to help and just kind of try to follow up with what you have been doing and what the plans are, so.
Thank you, ma'am, and you're welcome.
The Harris County flood control.
Hi, Randy Meche. Randy, you got a, uh, a Dendi or Melchior? You gonna wait till we get to it? You gonna wait till we get to it? Or you want to go and speak now?
I'm sorry.
You gonna wait?
I'm waiting. I'm fine.
Okay. Tim Compton, Tim's here for Dendi, you gonna wait till? You gonna wait on the Dendi? Thank them low, Miss Mo.
Good morning, Commissioners. On October 10th, after attending an EMS meeting, I was brutally attacked in the parking lot of the Winnie Courthouse Annex by a paramedic with a Winnie Stoll volunteer EMS. I had a large knot on top of my head from being thrown and landing on the top of my head on the pavement. No arrest was made. Thank God I was not paralyzed or killed. There are no surveillance cameras like you have at the courthouse here. Security had been requested. There was no security. At the previous meeting, there were two security guards. It took over 40 minutes and four phone calls for a deputy to arrive. I would like to know what the average response to an assault-type incident? What is the average time? My attacker was not arrested. He even made the state, the deputy even made the statement, yeah, he probably would have been at this event at Altis Bar. Why is the Winnie Stoll area the last to get help from you? What would you do if it had been your wife, your daughter, or even your granddaughter? Why was no arrest made?
Thank you. All right, Julie Garrett. SB 8, Disaster Assistance. Julie, good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Thank you for having me, Garrett.
Thank you, ma'am. Come in, let's try.
Yeah, that was great. So my name is Julie Garrett. I'm a public information officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. And I know you guys know there's a disaster recovery center over at the American Legion. And that's open seven days a week, nine to six, Monday through Saturday, and noon to five on Sunday. And I'm here to give you the loan totals for Chambers County. So so far, we've approved over 42.3 million in disaster loans for Chambers County, 2.3 million for Anawak, and 7.2 million for Winnie. So there are disaster loans available for homeowners at 1.75% and renters at the same rate, up to $200,000 for home repairs and $40,000 for personal items, including vehicles. Even if you purchased supplies already or vehicles, you can put that up and get a loan for that amount and pay yourself back at 1.75%. I've heard of people raiding their kids' college funds and putting this on their credit card, and these loans are a better option. And then businesses can apply for physical disaster loans and economic injury loans. So even if your business wasn't damaged, but people couldn't get to it, and you lost income for a few weeks or you're struggling, you have until May 25th to apply for an economic injury loan. And that interest rate is 3.305%. And the deadline right now for applying for physical disaster loans is November 30th. You can apply in person right there at the Disaster Recovery Center. They'll help you and walk you right through it. Or you can go online and apply, sba.gov/disaster. And you can get more information at 800-659-2955. 800-659-2955. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We share that information in the office. We, thank you.
Can we ask what the term of the loan is?
No, I can't ask questions, but what's?
The term is up to 30 years.
Thanks.
So it can be very useful.
And yeah, if you'll get the information to me, I'll send it out to everybody, so we'll have it all right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lee, DA, complaining about a tech? You should be on it, sir.
Yeah, I just needed a title. Uh, I'm gonna read this, because I don't really miss anything. And I would have been on the agenda, but all this happened too late, so. As of January 1st, 2014, all counties in the state of Texas were required to follow the Michael Morton law. This law ordered that prosecutors provide defense attorneys with essentially their entire files on all cases. Prosecutor's offices must provide offense reports, statements, digital media, and medical records, almost everything except CPS records. My office purchased software in 2013 in anticipation of the new requirement. It allowed us to share this material with defense attorneys electronically. It was simple. We were in compliance with the law, and the defense attorneys could access their files via the Internet. We've had no trouble. If there was a glitch, NetData responded quickly. Chambers County switched to Tyler Technologies on May 1st, 2017. We were told there was an online discovery program, but were not provided too many details. When employees from Tyler Technology came to Chambers County in May for the Go Live, no one could answer our questions about online discovery. Finally, we're told it was another team with Tyler Technology that would do that. The first date to Go Live with online discovery was in July of this year. That didn't happen. We have been in communications with employees of Tyler, but only via phone and email. No one has come to our office to help implement this system. We have been responsible for testing it with the help of a local defense attorney who's very tech savvy. The Go Live for online discovery was yesterday, November 13th, 2017. And that, I understand that Go Live for everybody was in July, and then the discovery was in November, yesterday. So far, it still doesn't work. We have a small group of defense attorneys we are working with at this point. They are required to register, and then my office approves them before they can receive their discovery online. So far, the approval process has not worked. My staff communicated with the Tyler employees via email yesterday to get the program working. It still wasn't working by the afternoon. We were unable to get a response from our contacts at Tyler Technology in the afternoon. And whoever was here yesterday, supposedly, we only have her this week, and then she left our room. We have gone almost seven months without online discovery. My staff has made copies of files or emailed them to defense attorneys. Adding a defense attorney to this, to his case in NetData literally took seconds. Now it can take hours, depending on how large the file is. Records must be kept to show we provided this discovery. It is tedious and time-consuming. Sometimes the required form acknowledging discovery is not returned to my office. This has literally ground us to a halt. By law, I have no choice but to provide these documents to defense attorneys. My entire support staff could literally do nothing all week but make copies of these files. They already have full-time duties before we switch to Tyler. We are worse off now than we were before the conversion. The level of support we have received is troubling. No one has been physically at my office to implement this system. My staff has been tied up for months providing discovery and trying to implement the system.
Okay.
I will be, I'll be asked to be put on the agenda until it gets fixed.
Well, what we need to do is get them here.
Yeah.
All right, Judge Cosarano.
Thank you.
DA's office, thank you, Cheryl.
I'm deferred, I was deferring to Cheryl, Judge.
Thank you.
My comments would echo hers.
Okay. I appreciate it. All right, Ryan Singleton. Ryan, you got a couple of Dendi items. I got Ben, y'all gonna wait till those come out? Stephen Delard also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Larry George. We're not gonna let him speak, because I know what he's gonna say.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, thank you. Y'all, it's, uh, it's time of year you have to file for reelection, and I just want everybody to know, I've elected not to, not to file for reelection. I love the job. I love working with these folks up here. Got another year in office. Hope it goes well. A four-year term would put me at an age that I really don't want to work. I just want to retire, so. And I don't want to do half a term or anything like that. So, sorry, Bobby. Nothing personal, but, uh, but anyway, long story short, I appreciate everybody. I appreciate, especially the newspapers, have been super nice to me, and I'll miss.
Just wait.
It ain't over yet. And I'll miss everybody, but I tell you, you couldn't have a better court up here. And I know Rusty and Rusty and I won't be here, but there'll be some good candidates out there, and I think you won't miss a thing. And on that note, I have filed for reelection also. Okay. Thank you, Sister. Since his comments. Yeah, I did. Turned it in, didn't I? All right, I told the chief we'd go start with him. He's got somewhere he's gotta be. Chief, you'll come in? Law enforcement, 16-1, discussing center Verizon Wireless, customer agreement, BIR contract number, BIR PSO 3415.
Yes, sir. This is a, what we're trying to do is get an account with Verizon through the sheriff's office. As the sheriff's office is growing, we're adding more and more electronics to, uh, to our office. And we're trying to separate the two to make it easier if we change MiFi's or routers or something like that, that we're able to contact them immediately without going through the county's contracts. So we've gotten with Verizon, and, uh, we'd like to move forward with this.
Question? Anything else? So moved. Listen back to Mr. George. Take it back to Mr. Gore.
Were you talking about the technology groups, not the board through them, or just going directly? I mean, I'm not real clear about that. And they're not gonna use? You're not gonna need to communicate?
Everything is the same. We, they, they're still the same vendor. It's just that now if we add someone's device for any reason, then I have to contact IT. They have to put in the order. Goes online this way. We just directly, I'm able to get on directly and go up to the Internet and place the order.
Okay, got a motion second, so the favor. All right. Motion Security 62, discussing consider additional personnel for courthouse security, SB 42.
Yes, sir. With the passing of Senate Bill 42, the creation of the courthouse security, there was a meeting with the committee, with Judge McDonald, Sheriff, I believe Scott, Judge Van De Venner.
Eric Cosarano.
Eric Cosar, from the DA's office. And what we are looking at is additional security, primarily when you have high court docket days. And they're getting more and more, and it's getting to the, to the point where we do not have the ability to provide the staff with the current staffing level. So the general consensus was if we added a part-time position, it's a full-time employee, but it's only a 32-hour, would be eligible for benefits but does not receive them. This would be able to handle the needs of the courthouse through the district attorney, through Judge McDonald, Judge Kane, and the county court. Added security plus, it's just, to be honest, the nature of the beast, we're just getting busier, and we just currently do not have the staff to fill the needs that, that come up with these docket days.
So this would be an independent contractor?
What this position would be, would be through the sheriff's office. It would be a deputy. Like Bobby and Hector, they are 32-hour employees. And we're able to stagger the shifts. They're not here on, you know, if it's a slow day, they go home. We're able to fill in those, those gaps where we just.
But hourly, hourly position as needed?
Yes, sir.
Not 230? 32 hours?
Correct. And Nikki and I have worked in the past with Bobby and Hector. They may put in 50 hours this week, and then in the second part of the pay period, they're gone.
Yeah.
So, like yesterday, it was a Monday, and it was extremely busy over here. We had everybody running around, and we needed additional staff. And it also, it's getting to the point where we're making more in-court arrests, which we end up having to pull a deputy off of the street to handle that, because we need the staffing level here to take him across the street to end up booking him in the jail. So it helps the needs of not only the district attorney, county attorney, but both district courts and the county court. It's just, to be honest with you, we're just getting busy. And we're at a point now with the, with the Senate Bill 42, needing more security for these district courts. We're in a position now where we need, we do need help, and we're asking for that position.
Judge, I'm, I'm moved for approval, assuming we've got budgeted funds under the security of courthouse security. I know, that's a separate, totally separate fund.
And that's where we plan on, we were approved last year for that line item. We do have the funds in there currently to continue that, to not only.
Hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now you go. I needed a second. Now you go. I got a second.
Oh, so I'm done?
We have a motion on the floor now.
I got a motion by Commissioner Snack, second by Commissioner Nelson. Now, is there anything else, Chief?
Oh, sir.
You just answered Rusty's question.
Oh, okay.
I thought you had, you had the money there to budget it.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, got a motion second. Any other questions? For the favor, opposed, motion carries. 16-3, discussing center purchase of budgeted replacement of 10 Coban MDT units.
Yes, sir. These items were budgeted for our, our budget cycle this year. Uh, we were going to replace them June or July, and Coban had changed their operating system, how they, these units went into the vehicle. So what we did is we ended up studying their, their newer system. And it's, to be honest, it's just taken some time to get to this point. We're at five-year cycle on these computers in the vehicle, and we're having more and more maintenance repair issues with them. This request here will replace eight and add two additional for our crime scene units, which currently do not have Coban. And we realize that when they get out to the scene, these scenes sometimes take hours to process, and they will have the ability to start entering evidence there at the crime scene versus waiting to come back and having to enter that at the office. This is an item that was placed in our budget for 2017, and we currently have the funds to move forward with it.
Make a motion that we approve for the amount IT exceed 123,670.
Motion back to Commissioner Snack, second back to Commissioner Gore. Questions? For the favor? Opposed, motion carries. 16-4, discussing center payment of budgeted Coban warranties.
Yes, sir. For the units that are not being replaced, that we plan on phasing out over the next couple of years, this is an extended warranty. It allows us to, to replace these units, not lump sum, but to phase them out. And the extended warranty will get us to, which is actually on our 2018 budget to replace an additional, I believe, 10. But it will carry us through on the warranty for, for the next year.
Question? Motion to approve. Listen back to Mr. George, second back to Mr. Nelson. Any other questions? For the favor? Opposed, motion carries. 65, discussing center purchase of budgeted cradle point rugged integrated broadband routers.
Yes, sir. What this is, is anybody that's got a cell phone and runs around Chambers County knows we have dead zones. And what we have run into in the past is we have actually had to send deputies to a call to see if the deputy on that call is okay, because the radios go down, his cell phone goes down. We have, we do not have the ability to contact them when they're in these zones. Some of them are on the west side. We've got some down toward High Island, that area. There's even dead spots in Anawak, depending on where you are. So we've gotten with Verizon, and they've reached out to INS. This cradle point, uh, this cradle point will replace the MiFi's that are currently in the vehicle, and it's, Derek were here, he could explain it in IT terms, but it's a booster. And it alleviates those issues that we've run to in the past. This is a co-op. They are co-op. We've gone out for, for bids on this. This was an approved item in our budget for this year. This is the only vendor that meets the needs. We've set up the specs for everybody, and we, we've gotten this, this response from this vendor. And George was here.
The Big City Tower didn't eliminate some of those dead zones?
Yes, sir.
Eliminate some of them, still got some?
We've still got big areas in this here currently.
Well, for the, for the radios, I think it, it helped a lot, but cell phone is.
Cell phone.
We also, we use an in-car MiFi, just like I'm sure somebody have a MiFi and it's attached to the mobile data terminal, and that will negate that. It will be in the car, bolted into the trunk to where it doesn't move. There's an antenna that goes with it. It's not just a MiFi. It's tie-strapped onto our mobile data terminal.
So we'll no longer have the MiFi?
No, sir.
Well, no, they will.
This will replace that, excuse me.
But there is a monthly expense. There is a monthly, same.
Right, I understand that, but.
But these actually.
Go away to that.
Correct. And these actually have antennas that are gonna be mounted on the vehicle and gives us a better range, better reception.
Now, is this radio and phone, or just phone?
Just the phones. Which, that's, you know, MDT's and all that operate off of the Verizon system.
So is there a monthly associated with this, or it's just?
Yes, sir. It's already, we're currently contracted with them, and it's the same. All we're doing is switching out the equipment with this equipment.
54,000.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Listen back to Mr. Gore, second back to Mr. Nelson. Any other questions? For the favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
All right, let's go back to the second page. That's folks here under the Safety Emergency Management Item, 9.1, discussing center purchase of ambulance and related medical equipment. You guys want to speak now? Ma'am? Dave?
We got the end line for it right now.
Okay.
Okay, the first agenda item is to purchase the ambulance. We, we had some part of an emergency happening, and we, we did actually purchase the ambulance, an emergency purchase. But now we need to, I suppose, ratify that. We do have the need for it. It has been delivered. So.
Yeah, there, uh, there was issues with, we thought maybe another ambulance, because of things that were happening in the county. And personally, I did myself free to, to an emergency purchase, to have it in, and which we did. And so it's on site. We need to ratify that at this time, and hopefully for the related medical equipment.
So what was the dollar amount? I couldn't quite tell. It looks like 112,734. Is that, is that what the dollar amount is for the DSH?
The ambulance itself is 131,185 dollars.
So what, I'm not sure what we're approving here.
It relates with, I just sound like.
Yes, so.
It is, um.
It's the grand, the grand total includes ambulance and equipment, correct? 164, 495,02.
That should be right.
So it's 132 for the vehicle?
Uh, 131, 185. That's correct.
Yeah. 164, what?
495,02. That's on page 446. Brian, did you have something you need to actually look?
No, I'm just listening. I don't have any questions.
And the purpose of this ambulance will be as a backup, case storm goes down.
Yeah, and, and we'll get to that during the next, the next item.
So where would it be housed and maintained and then taken or taken out?
It would be housed at Anawak, and I'll explain that with the next.
Well, you can go ahead and talk about it now, Jim. I mean, it's, it's kind of related, and I'll, I'll put it on the table. 9-2 is discussing consider funding for expanding coverage of Anawak EMS included substations at the Wallaceville Fire Department. Go ahead.
All right. Over the years, and, and we have some people here today that would like to, to echo some of my sentiments. Over the years, we've had several times that, that an ambulance service within the county was, was occupied, and we had another emergency pop-up. And there was a, a long delay in, in getting that person transferred to the correct level of care hospital. So I've thought about it a long time, and I thought that if we had a backup, then that would allow transfers to, to occur and, and districts within the county not to be covered. So what I'm proposing is that if we put this second ambulance in service as a extension of Anawak EMS's service.
Simply because that's mid-care.
Right. They would be located at the new fire station at Wallaceville, which is central to the county. So because like, if, if someone in Smith Point has a heart attack, Anawak EMS is gonna be out of service for at least four hours if they have to go. If light flag is, is fogged in, and they have to go to Smith Point, assess the patient, wound the patient, drive to Ventab or Herman or Methodist Hospital in the Medical Center, or John Seeley in Galveston. And by the time they get there, they transfer patient care to the emergency room, and then they drive back. You spend at, at least four hours that the county's gonna, or that district has gone unprotected. So my proposal is that, that if Anawak would go to Smith Point in the scenario I just explained, then the, the backup ambulance at Wallaceville would come to the Anawak District and man it until the, the original ambulance got back. Same would go for Winnie. It would go for Grunde Bay and for Mark Bellevue.
Are there those other EMS folks sending for this?
The rest of the EMS?
Do what?
Do they send names for this?
Absolutely. All four EMSs within the county have endorsed this plan. Bruce Oliphant was gonna be here today. Because they run two boxes, I had a kind of a doubt what their sentiments might be. When I talked to Bruce, he said, absolutely, I endorse this. He said, if you need letters written, if you need me to come to court, he said. to come to court, he said, absolutely. He said, I do endorse this, he said, we will utilize it from time to time. So, so, um, Barbie Holloway with the, uh, Trinity Bay is, and Anawak has endorsed it as well as Winnie Store, so. So, it has everyone's endorsement, uh, it's just a, a matter of funding it, it, this is, this is one case where you can actually take this out of the, the nine oh one accounting, pass the red face test, that's what that tax was created for, was to, to help health services.
These, these EMTs can work under multiple medical directors, so the ones in Winnie, Trinity Bay, Anawak can all work under Dr. Redding over here, so they can come and get in this ambulance or go. And that's, that's been discussed, so they can work under multiple...
I, I, I can appreciate the, the, the desire of, of any EMS, we have backup vehicles and that type of thing, but we didn't identify this as a need prior to us purchasing the unit. I mean, we purchased this unit because we thought we had an emergency, but it, but in fact, we did not have an emergency or resolved itself somehow with this, I don't understand that part of, I mean, do we have an alternative? Can we send the unit back? Is there a restocking fee or, or is it that we're just, it, it sounds sort of like we're trying to justify it after the fact, uh, and, and, uh...
No, we can justify it by having a spare ambulance. If, if something happens, if any of the others and they need ambulance, instead of spending the money written like Winnie had to do, we'll have a standby. Uh, but in, there is a real need for what we're talking about here. I, firsthand, my mother-in-law was down here about to die in the hospital and with Ben knows, he was there, and we could not get a, a Caddy of her was there for hours and this ambulance would not leave here because of leaving uncovered. This would solve those issues and I'm, you know, that's personal and I've heard many, many stories just like that.
So, Anawak only has one ambulance?
A one, that's man.
Yeah.
Fair to write.
Commissioner, we're, we're not trying to justify the purchase of that ambulance. This, this plan of mine was, had been discussed a long time ago, long before Winnie Store wasn't in any kind of danger of not having service. It's, it's been a, a problem and Ben can speak to you, uh, and explain, I, you know the frustration when you have a patient in an emergency room and you don't need to get them to Europe, you just need to get them to Houston, Texas in the Medical Center, but it takes hours and hours and hours and a lot of times that patient is deteriorating while their condition is deteriorating while they sit there and wait, so.
No, I, I, I understand that, I, I know at first they, that, and so, uh, it's not, uh, that's, that's not the point, but, uh, part of the point would be if we've known about this need, I mean, we didn't talk about this during budget this year, did we?
Right, and, and, I mean, like I say, it, it, it would be come out of the health services, which...
No, I don't, I don't recall talking about it during budget, but, but that is, you know, you can't take everything during budget how you try to. Mr. Peel, you had something?
Yes, very briefly, uh, and I understand the situation to be that under some emergency authority, there was perceived emergency, the authorization was made at that time and then later, the, uh, need was no longer there under that purchase authority, but we have an alternative purchase authority at, at this moment. But either way you look at it, it is a, uh, authorizable purchase. One of the things I wanted to tell the Commissioner's Court was, you know, I don't like talking about county liability in front of an audience, but with that said, anybody who has a loved one who passes away, um, under circumstances which similar to what we've heard, is going to look for somebody to sue and one of the ways to get through county immunity is to know there's an issue and not take good faith steps towards it. This would be a good faith step towards a publicly known issue that the county may have. And so, under that rationale alone, this might make a decision for, for to make under the District Commissioner's Court, which is at the height of...
Thank you, sir. Ben, you wanna weigh in? I think, would you take your microphone, please?
I wanna say two things and two things.
Ben Galloway.
I don't think I need the microphone.
This is okay, they've got you.
Oh, you do, they're recording. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not, from the old military, I can't speak as loud as anybody. I wanna say two things, folks. Thank you all for what y'all do, but after twenty-two years here in Chambers County, what Mr. Kim Turner brought up and I think Judge Sylvia knows and I can write you a book, what happens in Winnie and Anawak and I worked in Mont Belvieu everywhere, when you have an emergency, we handle them, we take care of them, we do everything we can. If we have bad weather, we cannot light fliterman stuff, sometimes we sit there for three, four, five hours. I have a lady, she sat there for six and a half hours, I could not find an ambulance to take her. What happened to the medical care and the care for this lady, uh, it hurts. I want y'all to be aware, we need to take care of Chambers County people. I think this proposal right here would alleviate that problem partially. It's not gonna be a full solution because right now, if I have a patient, I'm working tomorrow night, if a patient needs to go to Herman, if I have that ambulance in Wallaceville, I call them, I still have support here from Wind County or wherever and they can go. If Winnie needs the ambulance to go somewhere to St. Elizabeth, they can call that ambulance and they can help them while they still have support for the, their area. But I'm gonna leave you something that's gonna make you heroes one day. I'm begging you. Right now, if we have a hurricane, we do not have full-time employees anywhere. Mont Belvieu do, but the rest of the county that we don't, we have borrowed people. When a disaster, when a hurricane, where anything comes in, guess what? All these paramedic and these employees, guess what they do? They don't stay with us here. They go to Beaumont, Port Arthur...
They go to regular job.
They go to the regular job. We don't have no coverage here for Chambers County. I cannot get a full-time employees because they don't have no benefits. Uh, we fix our EMS right now, I'm the president of Anawak EMS by, but we need help, I think one day, one day, all areas, we need to really closely look at a county EMS. We're inviting the people from Liberty next hour meeting on the twenty-seventh, they have a contractor that's run their EMS. We need to solve the problem for Chambers County EMS permanently, for good, and we all will take care of our Chambers County people. That's what we all can say, please think about that and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and this, the reason we have a health services health tax, I went out and pushed and supported for this reason, for EMS services. I mean, that was the main focus of the health services health tax, you guys agree?
I have Colorado County, uh, they're about the same area, twenty-one thousand square ma, I mean, uh, population and stuff, they're almost the same and how much it's gonna cost and how much the, yeah, it's gonna be like life insurance, there's gonna be some liability, there's gonna be some this, but I promise you, it's not gonna be, the county's already paying enough money to all the areas and we're collecting some of the money and once we become a county employees or we get these people here permanently with us, not only that we will benefit and we will have support forever, but it's not gonna cost us as much when you look at the numbers and stuff. But, uh, I would recommend that we get a, a group of people, people from Winnie, from Cove, Mont Belvieu and us, all board members, we all meet, come up with some good solution that will help Chambers County for the future, permanently. We have an EMS that's fragmented, we need to fix this.
Yeah, I'd agree with you and I think y'all should do that.
And I think, uh, I'm gonna leave up Mr. Kim Turner, he's the emergency management and I hope we can get together as boards, then after that, uh, I hope we can present you with some good solution and I hope you can support us.
Yeah, you bring a good point. Turner disaster, which we just had, there is a definite need.
Yes, sir.
So, this would be, this would be a unit for the Anawak EMS organization?
Yes, sir.
And it would be a, a substation located in Wallaceville?
On interstate, yes, sir.
And it would be, tell, tell me about personnel in, uh...
We, we can stock that with a EMT paramedic and an EMT basic.
Just like we did others?
Eh, correct. And that can run advanced life support calls.
So, you're not, you're talking about part-time people? Just like the...
No, twenty-four-seven coverage.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, what he just said right there, it's not what we're talking about here.
No, sir, these are two different things, this is the Wallaceville, this is Wallaceville Station, it's completely separate from the long term.
Yeah, but that wouldn't, he brought up another issue there that need to be addressed at a later date, 'cause it's not on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
No, it's not, it's, but it all adds to the EMS.
It's all EMS, but right now, this station here, we really need it to support us when Jimmy's mother-in-law, we couldn't send her for three or four hours, the only choice I have, y'all ready to die, I said, Jimmy, put her in your car and take her, I don't have no other choice, I don't have support.
And I followed my sister-in-law like a hundred miles an hour down Clear Lake, running red lights at midnight, so...
And this is not because the judge is here, this is happening again and again and again and it's like, what, what can we do?
And, um, Ms. Blaisdell passed away.
Last Wednesday, before last? Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm still unclear on the, the, the budget amount that we're talking about. I understand how much it is for the ambulance, I understand how much it is for the accessories that are needed for it. Have we already taken possession of this unit?
Yes.
Under the emergency purchase that George and I approved, when we perceived there was an issue, well, there was issue in Winnie and we thought we may have run in ambulance to service that area.
And we had it customized to include a shoreline powered air conditioning unit so that the, the drugs is carried on board and stay cool.
So, so who...
We had it altered.
Who's gonna be responsible for, for banning this?
For banning it?
Anawak.
Anawak.
And one of the things you're doing by making it under Anawak is doing with some of the overhead costs, like with the medical director and, you know, the guy that runs it.
Right.
You already got those deployed.
We have sufficient workforce available to demand this?
Yes, in fact, when I, when I presented my plan to Winnie Executive Director, he said, that's great, he said, 'cause I have people that work a thirty-two hour, uh, work week, he said, this would give them another place that they could pick up more hours.
Yeah, just had one question and, and then a comment, um, housekeeping item, the emergency declaration originally was for seven days and then you extended it formally, um, after the, or right before the seven days, I think Commissioner George and you judge, I think the verbiage in that said until canceled, you know, the, the second one, has that ever formally been canceled and documented?
I don't think we have, have we?
I don't think so.
No, we need to, you're right. Yeah, this is a thought we have. Law, if you're listening, make a note of that, please.
So, we're still under warranty. A comment that I had, uh, just, just to point out, don't wanna open the whole note of county warrants, but we have a provision in the county personnel policy, section eight point one four, for emergency services leave that states, upon approval of the appropriate elected official or department head, a regular full-time employee may be granted temporary leave with pay to provide an emergency response as a, as an emergency medical volunteer or volunteer firefighter, not to exceed ten hours a month. So, we keep talking about, you know, someday maybe having a county operated, um, operation for EMS, but you have a provision here now to take some steps within the county whereby the county pays for a lot of these certifications and the attempts at certifications anyway and we reimburse when people get, uh, EMS certifications. Perhaps you wanna consider some sort of employee plan where more county employees are certified as EMT, certainly a retention plan where you can retain good quality people who are certified EMTs and then you have a backup plan that the county can support with along with the additional equipment. Just a comment.
Yeah, no, and that's a good idea, you know, we have a lot of folks that work the regular job and they go out spreading skitties and that, that could be some of that crossover where folks could, uh, you know, make extra money.
And Ben, just to let you know, I was a volunteer EMT for twelve years...
Yes, sir.
And I get it, believe me, uh, I understand it. What, what my concern is has less to do with EMTs and those needs and has more to do with if we have a need, we should have discussed it earlier and we need to do a better job on planning and how these things come about, instead of after the fact.
Yeah, it should be done during budget, I understand.
And, and Roger, I want to clarify your question, uh, it's my understanding that it's really only one, there's only one box right now, like, right now, that operates?
That's correct. The only, only service within the county that operates two boxes is the city of Mont Belvieu.
So, I thought each one of the groups has two boxes each.
They have to, but they don't man them. They have a, what they consider a primary unit, which is usually their newest, most dependable unit, and then they have a secondary unit in case the, the, uh, primary should break down.
That's why I was asking that workforce.
Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we man the secondary unit if this is an issue? I mean...
Well, one reason, because what the purchase is, because we declared it emergency, we said purchase as ambulance.
Well, but, but there was ambulance already available if you had a crew for it, Jimmy, that's what I'm asking, I mean, if you had the crew there available with another ambulance already there.
It was somewhat unique because the county does not own the...
Oh, I know, I know what we do, I know what we do, we don't own them, but I, I assume we're not gonna own this one because we're, we're giving it to Al.
Kerry, those amulets are registered with the state for that EMS.
I understand what they're, I know how they're registered, this is not gonna be, this is only registered to county?
No, according to Mr. Peel, it could be, it could be that we lease it back to Anawak for a dollar a year, whatever, that, those details would need to be worked out, but Mr. Peel told me that this morning.
I understand, but you asked me to vote on something that, that a lot of details are...
Well, yeah, ask your questions, that's what we're doing.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I know, and that's good.
I mean, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get a handle on like Rusty is, you know, where are we at as far as if we know we need another crew, another backup crew, and we have these extra ambulance, but there was no crew there, why couldn't the backup crew go to the extra ambulance? I mean, if, if, if that's, if that's a situation where we've got times when we're out of, you know, I mean, if, if we're the, if Mount Bellevue's the only one that's got two full-time crews and the rest of us just got one full-time crew, if we had another full-time crew available, why couldn't they go and relieve those?
Well, that's actually what we're talking about.
But here, here's a, a good example, Commissioner, okay, you, you have a crew and they're, they're sitting at Wallaceville, 'cause that's central to all of the services within the county.
And it's on ITM, which, a lot of traffic.
Quick, quick response time to, to motor vehicle accident. You have, you have the crew sitting in Wallaceville and someone in Wallaceville has a heart attack and they're sitting there, well, we need an ambulance now, so they say, well, probably our closest one is Anawak, well, Anawak's using their ambulance right now and their spare is broke down in the shop. Gotta go to Winnie, pick up an ambulance and come back to Wallaceville. You spent an hour to leave patient care.
And you could man that second ambulance, but we've approved purchase of ambulance, which George and I can do, it actually is George, but put it on him. But we, we, we approved that and told them to go buy it.
When that, uh, Judge, if I may...
Go ahead.
When the purchase was made as an emergency, guys, we had an issue on the east side where we were not gonna have any service for our east side residents, that's an emergency.
At any moment, at any moment it could be...
In the timeframe of looking for this ambulance, Roy finding an ambulance, we're starting to get that the east side is taking care of resolving their issues and they're gonna be okay. So, we say, okay, well, in my opinion, we no longer have an emergency, we need to put it on the court, let the court decide what happens. Judge is right, at one point, it was an emergency and there was a reason for it.
And we told him to order.
And it was ordered.
Because it was an emergency.
It was ordered. I heard earlier when I was outside about a restocking fee, I've asked him for a restocking fee, I haven't got that figured, I don't know what that is. I know that we had extra equipment put on it to the tune of about fifty thousand dollars, all right? That, that machine didn't have on it. So, if anything, worst case scenario, we're liable for that fifty thousand dollars, Commissioner, 'cause that was done during the emergency purchase.
Well, putting on one of the other ambulance is good, isn't it?
Yes, sir, we could, yes, sir, we could.
But they already have it, I'm sure, don't they?
I just wanna make sure I'm clear as to why it was emergency purchase, when it was an emergency purchase and when it became a non-emergency.
Well...
And it became... And it became to the commissioner's side whether we did this.
But we tell them, order this ambulance. It's an emergency.
That's right.
So, and then it comes to court for ratification, actually. The way I see it, Bill might see it differently, but. All right. So you got other questions or Mr. Bill on the way in?
Yeah, Commissioner Gore said this this morning. He said, the house catches on fire. It's an emergency. Sooner or later, it burns down. It's more than an emergency. Yes, this was an emergency at the time. And that I was instructed to buy the ambulance as an emergency purchase.
You are. Good deal.
Okay, so by my understanding, there's two ways that this could go forward. And frankly, because the emergency purchase was authorized when the authority was there, one way to resolve this would have been never to actually put this on the commissioner's court agenda for a commissioner's court vote to decide whether or not this is a proper purchase. This possibly could be a commissioner's court agenda item to ratify the understanding that that is the law and that was a proper purchase under the authority at that time.
And we've done that in the past on emergency purchase.
And so frankly, that was the best interpretation I had as to why this vote was coming up was to ratify a lawful order execution of a purchase at the time the authority existed between the purchasing agent and the county judge. Now, theoretically, if this court were to decide that it did not wish to approve this for the rationale stated here today, it is conceivable, and I think the authority is there, that under the authority by the judge and the purchasing agent, that it could still go forward, you know, without the commissioner's court approval because of the authority that existed at the time the decision was made. So either way, it can go through. Now, one of the additional things I would point out to you is regard, one of the best scenarios would be, in my humble opinion, for the county to maintain possession of this vehicle if that's lawful and license it under a, an EMS service so that in the event issues arise again, just like Anowak had in the past, Winnie has recently had, the county has authority to recover that vehicle instead of waiting for a worst-case scenario dissolution of an EMS service where the EMS service gets to decide what nonprofit they send that vehicle to. So another consideration is while this is county property, I do believe we're averaging about one box per year that the county is providing to EMS services, if I'm not mistaken. And so if we retain possession of this vehicle, there's always a possibility that when the next request for a vehicle arrives, the commissioner's court may decide to, you know, allocate that vehicle at that time. But again, the moment.
And take use of one, put it in that place.
All types of options are available. You've got more options available if the county is lawfully able to maintain title to the vehicle and let the EMS services.
What you're saying there, Scott, is if we buy one a year, which I thought we, we authorized to purchase one in Winnie for this year already.
No, we, we put a new box on what we do. It's down, actually it's down there on the box.
Remount.
Remount, that's what it was. And I'm going to tell you, that was a true concern, George and I, Kim, that Winnie would be left uncovered. Uncovered, no help, no assistance, no EMS.
We, we're part of our local agreement that we had with, okay? I mean, that's what we did in, I, we entered into agreement.
We got a agreement.
Box here quick. I mean, I don't know about four-hour issue you're talking about or five-hour. But I mean, that's why we ended with any local agreements. They said they could give one here quick.
We discussed that too. And we decided that that's not feasible. The cost was, I give what the cost was, it was tremendous and, you know.
Is it per day or per hour?
They, they didn't know our county. There was a lot of issues there.
Well, that's, and, and of course, we're talking about two different agenda items here. The first agenda item has to do with ratification of the emergency purchase.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's one thing. But.
Well, let's, let's work on it.
Under nine point, under nine point two, we're sort of morphing into something else.
That's right.
The reason for my asking about a restocking fee is that, that if it, if it makes sense to not keep it and to pay for the restocking, to use the supplies where they may be needed by other EMS facilities in Houston, I don't know that we're taking a fifty thousand dollar hickey or, or what a restocking fee might be for, for a unit. I don't know. It may make sense to replace an existing unit that, that Anowak has with the newer unit. That's a possibility. But if the issue has to do with manpower, then, then, you know, we need to help our EMS folks with manpower and to, to, to work on that. But creating a substation and adding additional dollars or, or, I mean, it's going to, it's going to cost Anowak EMS more to, to be able to, to have people up at this other facility. I'm not sure why they wouldn't use the unit here, but those are details that we can leave alone.
Well, and I, I, yeah, we're not making that out of that. All right, let's take nine point one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ratification of the purchase of the unit.
And related medical equipment? Listen, back to Commissioner Gore. Thank you back to Commissioner George.
So this is nine point one only that we're.
Nine point one, yes. In favor, opposed, most curious. All right, now nine point two. Does consider funding for expanding coverage of Anowak EMS, including substation at the Wallaceville Fire Department.
So the information we have in our packet says Anowak EMS, we station cost. It's on page four forty-six in our packet. What's the question here, Mr.? So, so the question is, do we have a request from Anowak EMS to increase the funding that we have under our contract with Anowak EMS for them to establish a station in Wallaceville?
Do we have a request from them?
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
And where is?
I don't have a written request. I have a request, a verbal request from all four EMS services within the county to, to ask the court to fund this plan.
But what would we, what we would be? Well, you're saying to fund this plan. I've heard the verbal part of it, but I'd like to see something written with the plan. And I'd like to see a specific request. If Anowak is going to have control of this unit and maintain this unit and if the county's going to own this unit, which we have not done in the past, that I'm aware of, I'd, I'd like to see a, a, a plan to, to do this and move forward. Have it come back for us to increase the funding, because that's what we would be doing. We'd be increasing the funding to Anowak EMS to implement this, and still we have to work out something with the, the, the box itself.
This is Sarah Surin on Anowak EMS Ford. I think the thing that is most timely to consider right now is the rebuilding of that Wallaceville Fire Station and to add the necessary build out on it.
Sleeping quarters, showers.
So where's that, is that in this?
As far as the funding, I can promise you by the two thousand nineteen budget hearings that will be held next summer of two thousand eighteen, we will have you a solid plan in place that will have the support of all the EMS in Chalmers County.
Hello, Commissioner, you have approved nine hundred thousand dollars for approval of this, of that station in the twenty eighteen budget.
Wallaceville?
Yes, sir.
This will be an addition for the EMS, the showers, sleeping areas.
Here you go, Judge Mike.
No, you just, you just have, you just have, under the budget, just for the volunteer fire department, they came and, and asked to add on for the EMS.
Sleeping quarters.
And, and so we came up, the one that's, the one that's on thirty-one eighty in Montpelview.
Trinity Bay.
Trinity Bay.
It's a big city.
That one in two thousand ten cost about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, somewhere in that. So I gave them a budget number of four hundred and thirty-seven. I called it four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you would add on to the nine hundred thousand that's already in the budget.
What was that? I thought that was going to be part of that one point four million dollar bond.
One point four million dollars.
I mean, I thought, I mean, I saw those two again right together. I, I, I thought they were related. The one fifty by about fifty or one thirty by fifty. And then the next item was about four hundred thousand. Add on the sleep, sleeping quarters.
Right.
The showers on it.
Absolutely.
So that's one point seven million.
No, it's nine, it's nine hundred thousand budgeted for the fire portion. Then four hundred and fifty thousand will be budgeted for this addition for the EMS.
So, so then one point.
One point three five.
The one point four million dollar bond is not part of this project.
It would be down in the end.
Yeah, I, I, what, I don't know what one point four million.
They're right there together. I'm trying to find them. I mean, it's, there's a lot of pages in this thing. I didn't mark it.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, but no, it's not part of it. It's nine hundred thousand.
PPK did both, both the estimates. One of them was one million, three hundred something thousand. They called it one point four million. And then the shower and living stalls on the one was four hundred something thousand. That's not the same thing we're talking about?
It is.
Yeah, the, the total's going to be one point four, including the, our estimated one point four, including the EMS part.
The, the thing is, is that you took the, you, during the budget, we approved or you approved nine hundred thousand dollars for just the volunteer fire department. And nowhere in the budget last year was the EMS part to this, okay? So we've got in the budget nine hundred thousand dollars, right? But we don't have EMS part. If we added the EMS part, it's going to, it's going to be another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But that's for Winnie Stone?
What's Winnie Stone? No, no, no. Page one eighty is from Jeff Chapman on the PPK.
You said one eight oh or four eight oh?
Four eight.
And it's, uh.
That's under.
To Mike, it's for a one fifty by fifty metal building, uh, one million to one two fifty, four seventy-five hundred square feet. It's got square foot price.
The one fifty by fifty, the one fifty by, by fifty was a million to a million two fifty. That we presumed to you in budget. You gave us nine hundred thousand dollars for that line item number one, okay? So, so for the one fifty by fifty, we brought the budget that is going to cost a million to a million two fifty. You budgeted nine hundred thousand dollars. You got what you gave us.
So you're asking for an additional four hundred and thirty-seven thousand?
Well, yeah, four thirty-seven, the rounded.
If, if you add the, the EMS.
Eight four eight. So you're going to build a, a one point two million dollar building that add a nine hundred thousand?
No, one point three five. So the nine hundred thousand dollars is a metal building. It doesn't have mirrors. It doesn't have the showers. It doesn't have the sleeping arrangements. It doesn't have what, what just a, a normal volunteer fire department can.
So does the one point, does the one point two include the four hundred and fifty thousand?
No.
What is the total, Mike? One point three fifty is the estimate?
One point six.
Here, here. This email is from July of last year before we had budget, okay? Do you understand that?
July of this year.
Yes. Then we went to budget with these numbers, okay? And we asked for a million to, to a million two fifty just for the volunteer fire department. That's all. You gave us nine hundred thousand. Then two weeks ago, they came to me and said, how much would it cost us to add the EMS to the volunteer fire department in Wallaceville? And I came up with another, you'd have to add to the nine hundred thousand budgeted, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we didn't budget enough start with according, according to their own report.
And now, now it's at one point seven, it's at one point seven million, right?
That's what I thought.
Well, not what they're.
A billion two fifty plus four hundred and fifty.
Yes, but you didn't give us a million.
No, but I know that.
That's what's on the agenda.
So, Judge Roy, what I'd like to see is, is simply, this is going to be Anowak EMS facility. It's, it's something they are going to, to operate. I, I don't think we need to be telling them what they need or don't need. I, I would like to see Anowak EMS come back to this court with a game plan for us to increase the funding to Anowak EMS to implement this. I, I understand that all the other EMSs are involved and they're in agreement, but at the same time, this is going to fall to this department, not only to, to, uh, to maintain the equipment, but also to man it. Manning it is the, to me, is the biggest deal of it, and we really haven't gotten much into that. So I'd like to see Anowak EMS come back with a proposal to commissioner's court on what they would like to do in, in the dollar amount associated with it, that we would have to increase our contract, our services contract with them to, to provide whatever service it is that they need.
And I think it's there. I think it said thirty-seven thousand a month.
They did.
I mean, that's what I saw. It's an additional thirty-seven thousand a month for manning. Now, it didn't say they were going to man it with full-time people. I, I thought they were manning with part-time people, just like the other ones are.
They are.
Well, it says right here, it costs them right now forty-four thousand a month. How do you get by?
Because we don't have to pay another medical director, another, what's the price of that one?
EMS director.
EMS director. You already got them in place. That's the reason.
That's why it's reduced from forty-four to thirty-seven thousand.
Okay, Mike, what about, uh, this building? When are we planning on going out for bid? I, I mean, what kind of timeline are we on if we're going to add this addition to it?
Did PPK do drawings on this already?
No, sir, we haven't voted to court. We haven't asked, you know, our architect. I would, I would. We need to do it the first part, the first of January right there because, you know, we got to get it designed and we got to get it rolling.
I make a motion that we table this item until Anowak EMS comes back to commissioner's court with a plan from them that, that makes sense for heading, uh, for the potential of heading this substation over. That's my motion.
Listen, back to Commissioner Snack. Thank you back to Mr. Nelson. So your answer to PPK is you haven't said anything to it.
My drawing. Mike's getting.
All right, motion second. Question?
Question. And I hate to go back to the last item, but we approved the purchase of, the ratification of the purchase of the EMS.
Which we wanted to go.
We didn't put a, but we put a dollar figure on that. Was that the hundred and thirty-two? Was that the hundred and sixty-four? And did one sixty-four not include personnel and what's here on the?
What that included was the box and the related equipment, right? Supplies and equipment.
Okay, it's done with this on four forty-seven on the employee, one-time employee cost. That, that, that's up for, for, you know, I keep going back to this. I think that's up to Anowak EMS to handle this from an operational standpoint. It's their responsibility to figure out what they need for, for their coverage and for them to come and request funding from us to fund their contract.
All right, Dr. Van, you understand?
Yes, sir. I understand everything, and I think he's correct. Uh, I think we should have given more like about how much the building is going to be, the personnel, the staff.
Well, that building needs to come from us. But the rest of these to be from you. And Kim, I'd also like letters from the other EMS saying, yeah, this will help us and support us and to me, you know, that kind of.
I think we're going to push for this first because we really need it. Not just, this is like, again, this is what Kim is bringing as emergency. I think we're gonna push for this first, because we really need it, not just, this is like, again, this is what Kim is bringing as emergency management. This is for when I need an ambulance to transfer somebody somewhere, not just for Anawak. He's keep saying Anawak, yeah, we're gonna take responsibility, but this is for Winnie, Cove, everybody. If they need help, that ambulance is gonna go down there to help them.
Is there, is there any reason we couldn't, even before we get to the substation bill, we can't go ahead and fund you for the personnel to run this ambulance out of the building?
Of course.
Or run your second ambulance, or?
We, we can do.
We can put that in place, maybe next court.
That'd be perfect, that'd be perfectly fine, but in July to, next year, I'm telling you, I'm commenting to you with a plan from the entire county, we need to fix our EMS.
Okay, and that, that's fine, you work with them, you come to us.
Yes, sir, I appreciate, thank you.
All right, I got a motion in the second. Those in favor? Uh, most, most curious. Uh, 9.3, discussing, consider accepting EMS station for Winnie Stoll EMS, Kim.
Okay, currently, the, the station in Winnie Stoll is, is owned Chambers County property, but owned by the Winnie Stoll EMS. They would like for the county to accept this as a, as a, not a donation, but a, a change of the deed on to Chambers County, so.
And, and we've already discussed, back to, we need a written request from Winnie Stoll EMS for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's on the agenda, we discussed it in the first one, but we're not ready to come back with a written request from the board.
And why, and why wouldn't they want us to do that? I mean, there's no...
We had Larry.
I mean, I didn't ask him this morning.
They're ready to be torn down, and will turn it down?
No, sir, no. Scott, I need your help here. Hello? Just, sorry. My apologies to the commissioners. What we're looking at here is we think it would serve the community better, as I understand it, and we're doing the research on it, the land is already owned by the county. The building is put on there, it's in basically good shape right now, you know, there are minor things that could be done, but I don't think that's why we're coming to you, we just think it would be whois to have the building controlled by your people so we can focus on what's going on here, and part of what's just been, been discussed is all the EMS services want to start working together countywide and try and cooperate and get this whole thing working right.
I, I was under the understanding that anything constructed on county property belonged to the county. Is that correct or not?
Basically. That seems, that appears to be up in the air, and that's why we think it's best to have that clarified, yes.
And we would clarify by?
Due diligence.
Accepting the donation, ask for the bill that, pass that, boy, Larry, please.
If the, the simplest way to clarify the issue, of course, would be if the Commissioner's Court did wanna accept this donation or grant, like the Commissioner's Court has the authority to do, because obviously there are times when conveyances of real or personal property are more a hindrance to the taxpayers in the county than they are a, a boon or a benefit to the county. But no, it is frankly a case-by-case basis, there are times when structures on real property are still owned and maintained, whereas there are times when, uh, property which is built, you know, you've gotta go back to some of the original documentation, you know, it may, it could go either way, and I'll just have to do some research in conjunction with the EMS board.
And we're not gonna make decisions anyway, so, uh, will you, will you get with, with Scott and, and find out what y'all need to do to be made to us?
And, and Larry, the only thing, the only reason I would bring you up is back, is if, even though it's own county property and, and the EMS built, you know, it's for the community and it serves the community, I will...
1C, well, 501(c)(3), yeah.
So it's, it's got, I think, meets qualifications. With the county, if the county owns it, and y'all wanna do something, whether expand it or whatever, and we own it, and it makes it more difficult for y'all to do that, and I, that's why I was curious why you would seek us to do that. You, your board could do things with the building that you wouldn't have to come back to Commissioner's Court to ask for.
Yes, sir, but there appears to be issues of qualification, of real title, whether it, whether land is, who owns the land exactly, how the building was done, and we think if we can get this qualified, we will make a written request if we do this.
Will you go and get that written request?
Yes, sir, we will, absolutely.
So we'll have it before next court.
Yes, sir, I'll get with the board members and talk to them soon.
George, do you have something?
Yes, Commissioner Snack, uh, as far as the insurance is concerned, we don't show it as a capital asset, or we don't insure that building. So, you're questioning where that belongs to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, it definitely has value, but...
It's not an old building, I remember.
No, it's in good shape.
All right, so we're gonna table that one, let's go to 9.4, thank you, Larry. Discussing, consider releasing court approved funds for Winnie Stoll EMS, em, with three mountains. I'll make that motion. Motion back to Commissioner Gore, second back to Commissioner George to approve funds for Winnie Stoll EMS. What'd I say? Oh, sorry. I knew that. Motion back, Commissioner Gore, second back to Mr. Nelson, those in favor? Most, most curious, we're gonna have to take a break and spend, but let's go to 3.9 and take care of Mr. Demuchay. Did he leave us?
He's still here.
Okay, 3.9, discussing, considering, application for utility destruction. County right-of-way for fiber optic cable to provide internet service to residents of Indian Trails subdivision. Bobby, you wanna start then?
Yes, uh, Randy came with, with Internet management service, and they've done this in Liberty, and then my Bellevue ran. And, uh, it'd be no different than, I look at, we have one on the agenda to approve a construction application for Comcast to cable company. Uh, they're gonna provide a service for Indian Trails through fiber optic and internet, and uh, they, it's very difficult up there right now, they don't have the system or have the internet they really need. And Jimmy's like that over there in his house too, but that's a little farther away. Uh, it, it, it's just, we just need to prove that they can go in our right-of-way and lay the fiber optic to our specifications, and that's what we're looking for.
Do you recommend, you recommend approval?
Yes, if, if, I don't wanna comment, what's their plan to do though?
Well, sure, uh, we, real quick, 'cause you guys have a long agenda, uh, we were approached by one of the HOA members of the community, uh, they works in Houston, and, uh, he's, they're all struggling in that area, they're in the outer extremes of the DSL, the copper. We're willing to invest in their community, we're actually looking for small pockets of starved, uh, locations. Uh, the fiber interests us because it's the end game, it's long-term, uh, it'd be a good solution for them, and we're willing to invest in that, and we're, we're seeking for approval for the Eastman access to, to, to put this fiber cable. Everything will be underground, and we spoke with Bobby about the details of that, and that's what we're interested in doing for that group.
Anything else?
Move for approval.
Motion back to Commissioner Snack, second back to Mr. Gore. Discussing, discussing, questions?
I'd like to introduce you to Mayor Billy Coats in Beam City.
Right here. In all honesty, they were on our, our radar there for a while, and we thought they were taken care of. So we pulled out completely, going in, they wanna be back on.
I think it's, I think it's a wheeling situation for this city of Chambers County that area.
Those in favor? Most, most curious, how much time do you have? Okay. Uh, go ahead and change it, watch us changing the CD. Is there anybody else I need to get to their item, it's gonna be a short one before, I don't know if you know of it, 11 o'clock, we're gonna have the, uh, the Storkel Commission is doing a birthday celebration, uh, for Bobby Hall, he turns 80. Is he in the courthouse?
Yes, he is. I quite.
Uh, Chambers County courthouse.
He is, he was here at the dedication.
Chambers County courthouse, he's 80 this month, and, uh, Storkel Commission's putting on a, a celebration out of the porch. So, is there anybody else that's got anything I need to get to that'll be brief? Rex? All right, so this, Chris, get back on. No, you're on. Okay, uh, let's go to our metal protection, April 1, discussing, God, a lot of fire, flash, and damage. Their revised map, uh, uh, right. Uh, that's coming up, January 19th, 2018, 8.2, you're tabling right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and leave it for 4:00.
Yeah, they, uh, FEMA, they updated your maps, uh, property owners sent in a letter of map provision, and, uh, so they go into effect January 19th, 2018, and I urge you to, the county, to adopt the new maps.
You said this is not related to hurricane?
This is not related to the hurricane whatsoever, this was going on two years before that.
Judge, on, on page 410, uh, there's a, a note from, uh, from Rex, uh, about some text that we're supposed to include in a flood plain order. So, do we have a specific order or ordinance or resolution?
Yeah.
That we have to adopt?
No, this is the amendment, you just add it to it.
So, we need to adopt the amendment today, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, and, and that is the text that's on, Rex, it's the one that says areas of special flood hazard identified by the, by FEMA in the current scientific and engineering report.
Correct.
So that's an addendum that we make to our existing?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there anything other, other than updating the maps that are referred to?
That's all, just that, and then accepting, approving the January 19th, 2018 date.
So move.
Motion back to Commissioner Snack, second back to Mr. Gore, those in favor? Most, most curious. Rex, we tabled your other ones?
Yeah, we'll tell you that, yeah. Thank you.
All right, it's 5:56 a.m., let's go ahead and take a 15-minute recess, and go to the right part of the...
I ask to make a couple of comments. This is all about the 80th birthday of this, the Chambers County courthouse. And believe it or not, this courthouse and myself are just about the same age. Now you know. The 1912 courthouse, and there are pictures of it all over the place here, including hanging up there on the wall, burned on April 28th, 1935, on a Sunday morning, just in time to greet people as they were coming out of churches, if they were so inclined to attend church. Anawak did not have the facilities to put out the fire of the largest structure in the Anawak area, the 1912 county courthouse. The courthouse was doomed. The destruction was complete immediately after the fire. The good people of Wallaceville came back with another county seat removal election. They hadn't forgotten the first time in 1907. The election was held, called by County Judge Guy K. Jackson Jr., not to be confused with his son, who was an attorney here for a number of years until his own death. Anawak won that election about 580 to 261. Then the wheels started to turn. Plans were drawn up by July of 35, they were moving quickly. One of the best architects in the country was hired, Cornell Curtis, and the contractor was also one of the best in the nation, Robert McKee. Now, where was all this money coming from to suddenly and quickly replace the 1912 courthouse? Well, guess what? The Anawak off-field had just come in, in March of 35, a month before the courthouse fire. And that off-field, along with the already present Barber's Hill off-field, which had been a viable producer since 1928, although it'd been around before that time, provided a sufficient tax base to build a first-class structure. And so it was done. $43,000 cash, $145,000 in warrants, and some $90,000 from the Public Grants Work Commission, I almost forgot about that organization. Construction started in February of '36, completed in May of '37, and then the dedication of this very building was held on June 26th, 1937, and there are pictures of the dedication, at least one picture here on this table. There was no St. Augustine grass out there at that time, that was to come just a few months later. I think that the central figure in all of this, who was elected county judge in 1931, the youngest judge, county judge probably in the country, was Guy K. Jackson Jr. He was 26 years old when he was elected, and he was county judge at the time of the courthouse fire and the dedication. He was an unusual person. He was responsible for the Chambers Liberty County Navigation District coming aboard in 1944, and he was a motivator in the coming about of the Trinity Bay Conservation District, uh, Conservation District a few years later. The man made his mark. We have two of his grandchildren with us today, Guy Robert Jackson and also Linda Ann Jackson Foltz.
Where are they?
Right there. Two of the judge's grandchildren. We have to remember all that happened in so quick a passage of time. Judge Jackson resigned in 1944 to be a board member of the Chambers Liberty County Navigation District. He was followed in office by Bob Winfrey, then Floyd Williams, former county treasurer, coming on up to Carol Hand, Bud Pounds, then Oscar Nelson. He resigned in the 70s. Guy K. Jackson III became judge, son of the county judge, who was here at the time of the courthouse replacement. And then on into the 80s, Alma Lois Harmon, again, Oscar Nelson, a man with his own vision and foresight. And then, finally, a very unique character named Jimmy Sylvia. Whoever he is, been with us since 1997. Jimmy was appointed right after the death of Judge Oscar Nelson, and then when the election time came along, he won in his own right, and we've never been able to get rid of him.
Thank God.
Good people, thank you for your attention. Eighty years, and this is still, in many ways, a first-class structure, from the marble hallways to the original terrazzo floor, and the fact that it was the first central air-conditioned courthouse of the state of Texas, and one of the very few in the nation when it was constructed. Enjoy the refreshments, Guy Robert Jackson is going to cut the cake, take a look at the pics. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Hi, uh, I didn't know if you knew this, thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
But, uh, it's the Chambers County courthouse, and, uh, 80 more years of this building, so it has been Chambers County courthouse. So, ladies, cheers.
Cheers.
Get a picture before I cut it.
All right, uh, I didn't know if you could do this. Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
But, uh, it's the Chambers County courthouse and, uh, eighty more years this building serving as the Chambers County courthouse. It's late. Cheers.
Get in there, get in there. Move over there, Robert. Move that chair away.
Look at that, perfect.
Very good. Look at that, perfect.
You did? Tell me about that. No, it was in nineteen sixty-one and my mom and our family gathered up everything and we were in the courthouse in the hallways. Right there where you evacuated.